For Monday, February twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four to order. First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. So, committee members, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion, we do that.
A second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan, could you please call roll?
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. Approval of minutes for November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We do have two of the three people that attended that meeting, so we'll need all three to approve, correct? Next on the agenda is approval of the January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, and it looks like we do have enough to approve on that. Mr. Ellis, Mr. Dungus, or Dr. Baker, any comments on the minutes from that meeting?
No, I don't have any. They looked fine to me.
Okay.
Good.
With hearing no comments, could we have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan, could you please call roll?
Ms. McBride?
Abstain.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. Okay. Next is a public hearing for a major modification request for case one dash twenty twenty, twenty fifteen, Anderson, for seventy-six sixty-one and seventy-six eighty-one Beachmont Avenue. If staff could please provide their summary?
Thank you. The applicant is Russell Myers of JLL on behalf of Mayfield Brain and Spine, on behalf of PCOA Associates LLC, who is a property owner. The location is at seventy-six sixty-one and seventy-six eighty-one Beachmont Avenue, and the zoning is OO, which is planned office. The request is to modify condition number nine of the original resolution in twenty, uh, twenty fifteen, where all signage shall not exceed two sixty-square-foot signs on the north facade, and the request is to install an additional forty point two square feet of wall signage. So, again, the zoning history, the, um, zone change was from E Retail, C Residence, and DD Plan Multifamily to OO Planned Office. This was case one, two thousand and fifteen, and it was approved by the trustees in August of that same year. And the approval contained two conditions that were related to signage. Number one was that the wall signs not exceed two sixty-square-foot wall signs on the north facade only, so a total of a hundred and twenty square feet of wall signage. And then number ten, there should be no freestanding signage allowed on the site. That was primarily because there was no frontage for a, uh, well, freestanding sign. Their, uh, frontage was, uh, included the access drive to McDonald's and First Financial and the cross-access, so there was no room for freestanding sign. The final development plan was approved in September, and then a zoning certificate was issued in November, two thousand and fifteen. Also, as part of the zoning history, currently there are two temporary banners on the front of the building, and at least one of those is in violation of the township's zoning resolution. So, this is the site in question, Beachmont Avenue to the north of the slide. And then, again, their building is set back from, uh, Beechwood Avenue. This is the aerial. This is First Financial up here at the top, McDonald's, the access drive that is shared between McDonald's and the surrounding properties. There is a cross-access drive, um, behind the, the shopping center that has First Watch, um, in it, and then the office building toward the rear of the property. This is the zoning map. The red is a retail commercial zoning district. The OO is the blue. The orange is a multifamily, which is the Asbury Senior Apartments. And then the yellow is, um, B, single family, which includes the Anderson High School, as well as some single-family homes off of Asbury to the south. Again, this is the site plan, and that what was approved, Beachmont Avenue, Wolfangle. This is at the signal, and again, the building sits back off, uh, the roadway. This is the proposed wall signage that would be mounted in the center of the building, again, the north facade that faces Beachmont Avenue, forty point two square feet. This is the elevation drawing. Um, there are two existing signs, Cincinnati GI and the, uh, Ritter Financial Advisory. This is the illegal, um, sign or the noncompliance sign. And then there's also, which you'll see in one of our other pictures, a for lease sign up in this general area. The Mayfield signs propose to go in between the two existing wall signs. So, this is the front, uh, picture of the front, taken from the parking lot. Again, the existing two signs, this would be the approximate location, temporary sign and temporary sign. Just different vantage points. This is the facade that faces the Asbury Senior Apartments. So, at the, at the meeting, when the building was approved, or when the zone change was approved, it was discussed that no signage be permitted on any other facade because, again, this was facing a residential apartment community. The rear is facing single-family zoning district. Same way on the, uh, west facade, also facing a single-family zoning district, although it's Anderson High School. And this is the distance from Beachmont to the front of the building, just to give you an idea of the visibility, and one of the reasons for the request for an, an additional forty square feet. McDonald's is to the left, First Financial to the right. First Financial does have a freestanding sign here, and then McDonald's, of course, has just one. They used to have multiple, so they just have one now, a very large one. So, the findings, uh, this is considered a major modification because it is requesting a change of an existing condition. So, we look at the approving resolution. Again, the maximum square footage was a hundred and twenty square feet of wall signs, and the request is for an additional forty square feet. In the OO Planned Office zoning district, the, uh, zoning resolution does allow forty square feet per facade. So, we did, uh, a, a calculation. If you were to include all four facades, the total would be a hundred and sixty, which is what they are requesting, but all the signage is requested to be on one facade versus all four facades. Looking at the applicable plans, the trails plan is not really applicable. It was, um, evaluated when the zone change went into effect. We did identify areas within the Beachmont plan. This is in neighborhood three. The Anderson plan, we did look at the chapters of economic vitality, land use and development, and did feel like this request was somewhat consistent with these chapters. And then finally, looking at the design guidelines, and these are the recommendations from the design guidelines regarding building-mounted signage. So, staff's recommendation was approval, um, based off of the following reasons. Number one, that if you did use the calculation of all four wall signs, you do come up with a hundred and sixty square feet, which is what is being requested. It is on one facade versus all four facades. We do feel like it is compatible with the surrounding site and condition, uh, the surrounding site, with the site and surrounding uses, including the commercial uses up on Beachmont Avenue in front of them, such as McDonald's and the Festival Market Shopping Center and First Financial, uh, which are all zone retail. They are in a different zoning district. However, this building does sit behind those, uh, and doesn't have the benefit of being up close to the street. Number three is consistent with the design guidelines. The signage seemed to be compatible with the architectural style and the features of the building. The building, as you saw, has a mixture of building materials. And number four, um, again, the building is set back, um, in some way is at a disability, a disadvantage for visibility. So, we do feel like, uh, it is appropriate to have additional wall signage. If the board does consider approval, we do recommend a condition that the temporary signage be brought into compliance with the zoning resolution.
Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Jury. Ms. Roberts, or Baker, sorry. Dr. Baker, do you have any questions of staff?
Yeah, I wanted to understand, um, first of all, there, I drove out there this weekend, and there is a small freestanding sign, um, in, right in front that, like, says, "Go this way for Mayfield," and it has a number of other businesses. And it got me to wondering, what percentage of the building is Mayfield taking up?
That I don't know. That would be a question for the applicant. Uh, I'm not sure what, how much percentage they are. And that sign you are referring to, we did permit that as a directional sign versus a freestanding sign.
Well, and it just got me to thinking, uh, do, doesn't anybody else have equal standing then, depending on how much of the building they're taking up, to make a similar request? Is, are we granting Mayfield just because they got here first? And, uh, so, I do want to know what the percentage is.
Mr. Dungus, any questions of staff?
Uh, I was just curious if we know how long the noncompliant temporary sign's been up, and if, um, the property owner or applicant has been notified previously.
There were some emails back and forth, probably maybe a year ago, or a little less than a year ago. I don't know if it was the owner. I believe it was the, um, broker that was made aware of that.
That's all.
Okay. Mr. Ellis?
Yes, I've got a question for Paul. Is this the same zoning district as the Tri-Health Building on the corner of Beachmont and Five Mile that we discussed last year?
Yes, it's a planned office zoning district, correct?
Do you know, I, I believe I know the answer to this question, but I'm not sure. Do each one of these indicated businesses on here have their own separate entrance?
Uh, I'm, I'm not aware that they do, but that would be a question for the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. McBride, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but my internist is in this building, and I can tell you they don't have exterior entrances.
I thought you just go in the main door there, but there was an entrance in the back for one of the, it might be an exit only.
It's an exit only when you're, somebody comes to take you home after you.
That's what it is, yes.
Right, yes.
Seeing no other questions of staff, if the applicant would like to come up and present the case, please state your name, address, and affiliation to the case.
Good evening. I'm Rusty Myers with JLL. Home address is one one nine nine eight Bright Silks Lane, Cincinnati, four five two four nine, and I'm here representing Mayfield Brain and Spine tonight. So, um, first off, I want to thank Mr. Jury and Ms. Donovan for their help through this process and the entire township. Mayfield's thrilled to be here, uh, thrilled to be part of the community. The real issue and, and reason we're here requesting the signage is just for identification and wayfinding. We found that the patients are having a little bit of trouble finding the building, and even once they're coming down the entry drive, knowing that Mayfield is in the building. I think everybody's aware, the building's set back pretty far from Beachmont Avenue, and we have both McDonald's and First Financial Bank kind of blocking visibility. So, uh, you know, Mayfield, just by nature of what they do, Brain and Spine, want to make it as easy as, uh, they can for their patients to find them and know where the entrance of the building is and, and where to go. So, I think Mr. Jury did a really nice job kind of outlining, um, the reason for the request and, um, hopefully the compliance, uh, with the zoning. When we look at the entire kind of allowable signage for the building, the only facade that's visible is obviously the facade facing, what would be, could be west, I guess, coming in the driveway. So, um, again, I think from the sign itself, very compatible with the design of the building, same type of materials. Tony Mayer's here in case there are any questions on the sign, uh, itself and, and the design of the sign. But, um, we really appreciate your consideration of this tonight. Any questions you might have of us, happy to answer.
All right, thank you. Dr. Baker, we'll start with you.
Yeah, what percentage of the building is Mayfield?
I can't tell you exactly. I think we're about twenty percent ocu, uh, of the building.
Okay. Are you number three after Cincinnati GI and Ritter?
Probably. I, I don't know the direct answer to that, but I think that's correct.
I also wondered, because there is, uh, the signage out front that clearly says Mayfield. I understand people have to drive back there to see it. But I did note that on the, uh, glass doors, it doesn't say explicitly which entrance to go in for Mayfield. And I wondered, you know, that's, that would be very clarifying for people.
Yeah, and again, I think a big piece of it, when people are coming down the driveway and seeing a sign on the building with Mayfield there, they know where to go. And it's really not a question of other wayfinding. So, that's the big reason we'd like to have the sign on the building.
Any other questions they have, then, Dr. Baker?
It, it might be a, a better question for you. What additional, do you have a list of the other buil, businesses that are there?
I do not. No.
I should have written it down. I didn't.
No, I, I don't. When they, uh, a new business goes in there, um, we make it a, a zoning stamp off for an interior renovation, but as long as it's a, we don't track the percentage.
Sir, do you know approximately how occupied the building is? Is it ninety percent, eighty percent?
Yeah, I think there's, it's about ninety percent occupied. I think there are only about four thousand square feet left to lease in the building.
Any other questions, Dr. Baker? Okay. Mr. Dungus, questions?
Uh, will the temporary sign be either removed or brought into compliance?
I would ask the township to pursue that, I think, again. I don't represent the building owner, and I don't represent, uh, Cincinnati GI, who has that sign on the building.
Got it.
I just represent Mayfield, but I would think if the township requests that to be taken off, that's the appropriate next step.
Okay. Mr. Ellis?
Uh, yes, I've got one. Where is the Mayfield entrance on that building? I see three doors there, and then I, I'm, I've been in that building, but, or at least up close to it, but I.
Yeah, it's actually under the canopy. You see, if you see that double-door entry there.
Yes, under the Ritter Financial.
Correct.
Under that is where you go in.
Correct.
That's where the elevators are.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. McBride?
I got nothing for a change.
Mark this in the calendar. I have no questions. I snuck mine in earlier, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak, well, I guess I do have one question. You know, it looks like the sign is individual letters, Mayfield all, and internally illuminated?
Correct.
Okay. Is there going to be, like, a continuous channel behind it, or is it truly individual letters? I see a.
I'm Tony Mayer.
Again, if you could state your name and address and affiliation.
Anthony Mayer, uh, Seventh Sentinel Estates, Wilder, Kentucky. Uh, no, there is not a raceway behind it. It'll be flush mount. The power supplies will be inside. I can also tell you that Mayfield is pretty stringent on not being, I want to say, obnoxiously illuminated, so it'll be on a timer where it'll kick on, let's say hypothetically, uh, like six in the morning. It'll kick off at eight in the morning, and then it'll turn on about six o'clock at night and turn off by ten o'clock at night. So, we put it on what we call a sun tracker. So, it won't be on regular. But during winter times, they do have early appointments. I know I've taken my wife to the one in Hyde Park, so, you know. And actually, my tooth doctor is in that building in the back entrance. That helps too. So, other than that, it's LED compliant. Uh, it's, you know, it's.
Okay.
Your normal, I would say, channel letter fabrication. The only thing that is disputing on the drawing, I will tell you this, the returns of the letters show black. They'll probably be blue, the same as the trim cap on the letters.
I also assume you're not going to use a TACOM masonry anchor into the metal.
No, not into a metal foundation. Actually, when we submit for the permit, it'll be engineered. So, they'll probably come back with a toggle or a wood anchor, or a zip, zip, uh, anchor.
All right, thank you very much.
And it'll be UL approved.
Could you repeat your address?
Uh, Seventh Sentinel Estates, Wilder, Kentucky. Four one oh seven four, if that helps, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, any other questions from commission? Okay. Hearing none, if anyone else would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none from our la, large audience. If someone would like to speak opposed to the application, please come forward.
Someone's just happy to be here.
I think so. All right. Uh, with that, uh, we'll open discussion amongst the commission. So, Ms. McBride, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. The, you know, the building sits way far back, and, and not only that, when you come in there, and there are the guys that are trying to juggle to go into the drive-through line for McDonald's, and then there are the guys going into the bank, and, and then there's the access road that cuts behind the strip center that gets to the Christ Hospital thing, and, and so forth and so on. You know, Mayfield, uh, it's their brain and spine division. These are probably not people even like the GI guys who go every five or ten years. Um, no, you know, it's a routine visit. You hope it's not a routine visit, but whatever. At any rate, um, and they're just basically using up square footage that they would be entitled to anyway, so I don't have any problem with that at all.
Mr. Ellis?
I think the main factor for me was, and I'm in favor of it, but with a caveat, which is, the main factor for me on it was that the building owner was in favor of it, one, and two, the staff recommendation in favor of it is what turned it for me. I, I will comment, and I've seen other buildings like this, where you have a, a really cool building, and it gets overwhelmed with signage. And, um, that's kind of my opinion on this one, with all these, uh, banner signs across the top of it. I think it is detracting from the building, and I also would add, I don't think that the Mayfield, um, sign in that location is assisting, uh, I agree it assists them when you come off of Beachmont, but it's really, uh, yeah, I drive up to that and like, hmm, building, you know, door one, two, or three. So, um, I, uh, bu, but with that being said, um, I feel like, yes, if the building owner is in favor of it, obviously, uh, Mayfield is a marquee tenant that they probably want to highlight, so I would be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Mr. Dungus?
Uh, I concur. I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I'm inclined to be opposed, uh, ba, on the basis that I really didn't feel like the question about the tenants and, and who has the most space there was adequately answered. The fact that I think wayfinding, um, might be, uh, adequately served by having bigger, for example, um, address numbers, and the doors are not clearly marked about who's at what place. I don't think it's, I think it does junk up the building, and I think that being set so far off Beachmont, I don't know how much it helps anyway, and I'm not sure it's fair to the other tenants. And, um, my deference to the building old owner only goes so far as his or her willingness to take down the illegal banner, which they have not been willing to do. So, that's my inclination at this time.
Thank you very much.
You know, I mean, my thoughts are, yes, there's a lot of signage for this building, uh, on one facade, but that's truly the only facade that has sort of public presence to it. And because it's set back so far from the street, it sort of diminishes that sort of public aspect of it. You know, going back, I guess, I, when I drove back, you know, I'm more inclined to go to the double doors because it is undercover. So, you know, it sort of is, this is the entrance, and a lot of multi-tenant spaces, multi-tenant spaces have that main entrance sort of under the canopy. So, aesthetically, if it was my building, I would be not in favor of it, I guess. But, you know, looking at where we are, knowing that the hundred and sixty square feet total with this signage would in essence max out if they're looking at all four signage, and any future tenants that come in would have to come back to the commission. And unfortunately, the building owner would have to say, "You have no signage allowance," so the township has to approve it. So, that's my thoughts on it. If anyone else has any thoughts we can add? Seeing none, if someone would like to make a motion, please?
I would make a motion that we recommend, uh, approval of case one dash twenty fifteen, Anderson, major modification for the medical office building at seventy-six sixty-one and seventy-six eighty-one, Beachmont Avenue, based on staff's findings, um, compliance with the applicable plans. Um, and I would include, uh, the condition that all the temporary signage on the property be brought into compliance with zoning resolution.
Great, thank you. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Ms. Donovan, could please call roll?
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
No.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, last, uh, item on the agenda is the election of officers. Uh, so, we have three here that are permanent and two that are, uh, substitutes, so thank you, substitutes, but please weigh in, based on your experiences with our commission. Please keep in mi, in mind that we have two people that are not here, um, Mr. Lewis and Mr. Henson. Mr. Henson is the previous chair, and as I emailed Ms. Donovan, if you're not there, you're maybe chair. Uh, so keep them in mind, uh, as far as who may be a good chair and vice chair.
I, I think that, uh, Mr. Gothard would be a great, uh, chair.
Mr. Gothard's done chair a lot. And that's why it might be good to have a someone else be chair.
About Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Lewis is.
Does he have any objection?
Let us hear it now. What's that? I don't hear Jay saying anything. All right? So, we nominate, uh, Mr. Lewis then for chair?
I, I would, I would second that nomination. So.
Ms. McBride nominated, and Mr. Gothard seconded for Mr. Lewis to be chair.
We were, I was looking at the terms of who. Mr. Lewis.
Where everyone was in line. I don't know if that matters, people.
Well, we get the same letter every year saying, do you, I mean, how do you even know when your term is up? I don't know.
I, again, I don't know if it matters.
I don't know. I think it's.
So.
Sorry. What is Mr. Lewis's term?
So, Mr.
This was from two thousand and twenty-three. This has not been updated.
Oh, it has been. It's over here.
No, it hasn't. It's still.
So, Jonathan, you were just reappointed, um, for a five-year term. And so, uh, it looks like Brian, this is your.
Yes, this is, this is Brian's last, his fifth year of five years.
And then it goes Ben after that. Yours is twenty twenty-seven. So, it would, it would go, um, yeah, Brian is in his fifth term, Ben will be in his fourth term, and then Jay is, am I in the right order?
Yeah.
Jay will be in his third term, and then Ann, and then Jonathan. We had to go by this.
Are you, do you need a vote on that?
I think we did.
I, I think the motion and second stands, so.
Okay. Do I need to do roll? Okay. Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Oh, yes.
And then, but wait, there's more. Then I would like to nominate Mr. Gothard for vice chair, since he's feeling so inclined.
I would accept that one, so.
I'll second that.
Ms. Donovan, could you please call roll?
Uh, Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. So, any new business on the horizon for next month?
Maybe. There's, there's still a couple off that are pending, but we, I don't know. They've been pending for a while, so, um.
Can you tell us what's pending?
No, I can't. Nothing has been publicly submitted as pending yet, so, um, so, right.
Okay.
So, we'll let you know. The deadline you said was, is Monday, so we'll let you know after, on Tuesday, if, if there'll be a meeting or not.
With that, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Uh, anyone opposed? Okay, everyone's in favor, meeting and adjourn. Thank you very much.
All right, thank.